Okay, everybody else up? December 3rd, planning board meeting will come to order at, uh, 7:02. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes, do we have a motion to approve the November 19th, 2019 minutes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no invoices at this time, so, uh, we have a bond release for Lot 11, Estes Way, Graham Way.
So, the applicant submitted a Form G with the release as well as a cost to complete memo from Peter Williams with GZA who was the peer review for that particular property at the time. In your package you'll find the letter as well as the cost of complete estimate. They're asking for a lease to $12,000.
There's no other outstanding anything, is there, on that job?
On the...
Uh, so, $12,000 will remain in effect.
So that will be holding the $12,000?
Exactly, there are a couple of outstanding items in terms...
Oh, that's still...
Yeah.
So there are some outstanding items, if you look at the memo, they have them listed. And one of them in particular that we had talked about was the easement in terms of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Is that the one off Oktak?
Yes.
Yes, that's the one, Graham Way is what they call it. So they have it Lot 11 off of Estes. So they still have, you know, as-built granite bounds, iron rods, riprap, basin outlet and catch basin hoods.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So, uh...
Motion.
Motion to approve bond release, Estes Way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Atwood Estates.
So for Atwood Estates, the developer had contacted me in regards to a bond reduction. I had contacted TEC who had done the original bond estimate. Peter Ellison with TEC is here to speak about that. The letter in the packet is what the peer review consultant has advised so to be lowered to $105,000 from its original, um, where did it go? So, yeah, so it's $105,000 to be lowered to $80,000.
Lower to 105, with a potential to be lowered to 80.
Damn.
Approve of stormwater infiltration state changes.
I'm pulling up the original memo right now, because I thought it was like $145,000 or something of that nature.
Anybody make a motion to reduce the bond to 80,000?
So the original bond is for $175,000, they're asking for a lease. TEC has estimated that it would be $105,000 unless they can show proof of stormwater stabilization and that would reduce it further to 80.
So do they show proof?
No, everyone's seen anything, so that is specific to the underground chambers. Since we weren't out there when they were installed, there's nothing at the surface to prove that they went in. So, simply just asking for some photos.
You'll make a motion to lower the bond until 100, to 105 until they...
No, 100, to 80.
No, 105 until they prove that the infiltrators, oh, Randy, am I right?
Yeah, I'm sure.
That's only if they can show proof.
That's only if they...
If they show proof of the infiltrator, they'll go down to 80.
Yep.
Fine. So I'll make a... So I'll make a motion to lower the bond to 105, and with a potential lowering it to 80,000 if they show proof of the infiltrators, photos or some other documentation.
Second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Plan endorsement for 733 Salem Street.
38 Benjamin.
And 38 Benjamin Street.
Oh, yeah, of course. If the chair doesn't mind taking any of the items out of turn, you might...
Nope, I don't have any problem taking, um, we got a hearing for 245. So, I'm sorry, we'll skip over, um, 73, 733 and Salem Street and 38. Come back to that and then, uh, we'll go to a public hearing for 245 Center Street. Do I have a motion? Open a hearing?
Motion to open the hearing for 245 Center Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
TEC have any comments?
Just to backtrack just a second, so the applicant was to, after the last meeting, the applicant was to go back with their engineers and confirm the site distance off of King Street and then they were also going to work with the fire department in terms of getting them the information that they required in order to meet their concerns for emergency access. During that time, I also noted that as part of the memo that TEC had issued, it did not address the waiver request and I wanted to get more of a detailed list of the waivers and what TEC had recommended based upon any of the technical nature of the waiver request. So in your packet you will find the original TEC memo from November 19th. You will also find the waiver memo that was just issued today and you will also find a memo from Hancock Associates that we just received within the last few hours for the engineer, applicant's engineer addressing the site distance concern. TEC has received that, but just recently, but I believe they have had a chance to take a look at it.
Want to put Peter in the spotlight?
Yes, let's do it.
So, I guess let's first talk, let's talk to the, of the site distance issue. So Hancock went out and measured it and confirmed that looking south or from the south, the site distance exceeds the standard, so they're all set for that. Traveling north, they confirm that we'll not need trenching, so it doesn't meet the site distance standards.
They say that it's 30 miles per hour, but the sweep...
25.
Yeah, so at 25, at 30 miles an hour, 3% slope, it's 205. And 25 is 158, so it exceeds 158 with the posted speed limit.
Yeah, well, I probably lied on that, you said that, um, do they normally do that? It's 25 miles an hour, they'll go 30 miles per hour?
Posted speed limit on either end of the street.
Shouldn't they be more specific?
Why they use the design speed of 30 might be because they expect people to travel higher than the speed limit, which is not common on residential, residential roads, I guess. So, that might be why.
You do file within the normal range though, if it's 25?
Yeah, 25, we'd see the 25 and just like, uh, with, with the, probably that way between the two, 27, 30, 158 and 205. 25 miles an hour requires 158, 30 miles an hour requires 205 and we are somewhere in the middle at 187.
So 205 required is what Hancock is saying and they're providing 187, so they're pretty close, they're not quite there. What they propose in their letter is to put in a hidden driveway sign, which is not compliant anymore. It used to be, but it's not anymore, it's not recommended. What they can do instead of the hidden driveway sign is just post a speed advisory curb sign where that curving road, try and get people to slow down if they come around that curve and then that would put cars into compliance with the surfaces.
Where does the sign go?
Where?
Off the top of the hill, right?
We can figure out the exact location later, I guess, but it would go up on the top of the hill somewhere before that curve.
So we need a reduced sign, reduced speed sign.
Curve ahead, 5 miles per hour, something like that.
That's provided people look at it, read it and follow it.
Yeah.
And then the only outstanding, other outstanding item in particular that was approached at the last meeting was for the fire department. I did have a verbal conversation with the new chief. He expressed that he would prefer that the applicant provide a turn analysis to make sure that they essentially can have the fire apparatus that they have, the largest one, can turn around in the proposed turnaround that they have. So it would be similar to what we've seen in other applications where they would just show the dimensions of the truck and show that it, the width and whatnot and make the turn. Because their biggest concern is whether or not they would have to back out of the actual site with the big truck with the long driveway. So they want to make sure that they're able to get up and turn around and come back down if necessary.
And there was an issue about a hammer, is that correct? About a hammer, is that what you called it?
That's the turn.
That's the turn.
Is that the turn?
Go in.
Gotcha.
That's it?
The waiver request. There's a good number of waiver requests because what their building is essentially a residential ground, so a lot of the roadway design standards aren't applicable.
Right.
There are a few in here that the board needs to look at, plus the requirement for underground utilities is one. Not really an engineering issue. They, it's feasible to put them underground, it's also going to cost them a lot of money. To me, it's a static issue that the board needs to weigh in on. I think the sidewalk was really helpful to figure out that we think it's feasible to build that driveway. One waiver I do not recommend the board gives is for Section 5, which is a construction standard. I don't think you guys actually really need to request that. It has to do with like excavation and road control and pretty standard items. I don't think it's really something that you need to...
Is it a road construction standard?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about the...
Uh, you can, I need to speak to the lawyers how this does, the radiuses they need. We can front up to the driveway going in, it's certainly going to accommodate that, that the, um, the corner of the crest of the hill is 100, well, 100 foot radius would go in the stair. And then when you get down to the body of the land, there's plenty of land there that you can accommodate anything that the fire department would want. We want them to be able to turn the truck around continuously, you know, not even, I'd like them to be able to just bang a U and be going.
On your plan, you have a U-shaped di- drive, circle driveway around your whole house anyway? Exactly, so they're going to come out...
Ten wheeler and route it right around there.
Right.
And then the track trail truck's doing all that driving.
Yep.
As a matter of fact, I would venture to guess we'd be having track trail trucks in the same stuff. Whatever trucks would be doing that for, you know, the building. The biggest truck probably that would be required is to be the track trail truck that's doing, you know, guessing would be required.
Any comments from the...
The only comment I have is regarding underground utilities. The last meeting, I made it pretty clear that the abutters did not ask for overhead utilities. The waiver request is still there and it's still there saying that the abutters requested overhead utilities. So that waiver request is false. We unanimously opposed to overhead utilities, all of the abutters. So I want the board to take that into consideration. If it's possible to put them underground, they have to go underground.
They don't have to.
Well, the waiver request is invalid.
Huh?
The waiver request is invalid, so you're going to approve a waiver request that's invalid that we told you is not the truth? Is that what you're telling me? Can't answer it, right?
I don't even know what he's saying.
No, it didn't say the...
I can't hear good...
The plan says that the abutters request utilities to be overhead. You weren't here at the last meeting.
The waiver on this paper doesn't...
The plan should be revised to reflect that and we can definitely condition that the plan shall be updated to reflect the...
You weren't here for the last meeting, so you didn't... I'm sorry.
So we can definitely make a plan.
Then request the waiver too.
In part of that was to minimize the blasting...
Right.
So that you say that, you don't say at the question of the abutters, you say to minimize the impact of the area, etc. We can simply correct that very, very...
On the plan.
So you're saying that if all of the abutters are opposed to overhead utilities, that you're not going to take that into consideration?
So that is, uh...
I have taken it into consideration.
Okay.
For a lot.
Okay.
I have, I don't know about anybody else, but I have, so...
I know that Mr. Sorensen said it was possible to put them underground. Thought they should, and I think you might have even kind of agreed to it too.
I agree to it, but, I mean, I still, uh, thinking about the waiver too.
Okay, no, that's fair.
Okay.
That's fair. That's fair.
All right.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
So we're going to go down each waiver?
So, I would suggest that you approach the waivers and if the board after doing so would like to vote on a decision, I have a decision drafted in terms of some of the other design outstanding items that we would condition that they have prior to a building permit or prior to occupancy and things of that nature. If the board wishes to do so, but I would strongly suggest taking a look at the waivers. In particular, some of the ones that are not technical in nature that TEC has left up to the board, which are the turnaround and the utilities. Everything else, TEC has made a recommendation in terms of their expertise as to whether or not they feel as though that that could be waived, but those are the only two items that, again, are not technical in nature and are really at the discretion of the board.
Did you guys explore the possibility of underground utilities? Any further, I should say?
Given it thought and, uh, it would, uh, it depends on the ground conditions. So I'd like to leave the, the possibility of squeaking it, you were representing it?
I went by on my own, I didn't go in, but I...
There's a big piece of ledge, the only place that would not require blasting that you could get a trench through is right next to the wall, which, um, depending on the topography of the ledge and how it lays, whether we could go around it, but that's going to require a little bit more invasive, you know, proof of woods and the trees to get right next to the stone wall, because it does drop off, you know, towards, uh, Pleasant Lane, the ledge. So, um, how, how deep that is, there's no telling. So with some exploratory work during the process of the excavation of the driveway, the tree removal, you could see if that is a possibility to get around that without having to blast, because the blasting is going to be, and that was an major concern from the very beginning, the need for blasting. Blasting, Pleasant Lane happens, you know, I don't know if they were all built at once, but there was a lot of blasting. We blasted for our foundation on the existing house, so, but, uh, we're, now we're right next to the houses, so it's going to be pre-blasted on base.
Right, right.
Blasting mass and so things are going to get a lot more involved and complicated. And it's not out in the woods, you know, when we blasted for a house and maybe even when they did the road for Pleasant Lane, it might just let it fly. I don't know, I wouldn't have been doing that, I...
Yeah.
And we've given some thought into what the possibilities would be there. Whether we could find, bend the pipe around those radiuses and get around that. The only, the only way to answer that question is to explore the data. And see, maybe a little bit of hammer, are you planning on hammering on the top? You can't hammer a, you know, three foot deep trench, three feet wide, just, you know, for...
A waiver and then vote on each waiver, you want to just vote on the whole?
I just did one.
And you blasted?
No, handed.
Three foot by three foot?
You ought to get a catch basin in the pipe.
Yeah, but you'll have to reheat it.
Yeah, it wasn't fun, it was expensive.
Okay, well.
All right, so, um, that was the, that's the thought process that we've been thinking of as an alternative.
To follow up on that, if you were to put the poles, they'd be what, four feet apart? Something like that?
Oh, 100 and 25.
100 and 25, okay. So the idea of the pole is to circumvent, trying to go over that?
Right, so, you know, it's, I don't know exactly how far that ledge runs, but...
Right.
We creep it up and we shot in the stand.
Yep.
For the ledge, put a long stand in and then...
So if it wasn't for this ledge or this little section, it'd be no problem just going straight across, directly speaking, because, I mean, wherever there's a pole, you could put a trench.
Right, that's, that would, that is the biggest hurdle.
Trees, once he's, once you put an excavator in there and start compromising the roots, the trees are going to fall anyways, so...
Yeah. Well, we start, we start from the ground, we can start to peel around on that. The big trees aren't going to be growing right on it, so we just have to follow it down.
Okay.
You want to say?
You want to say? Vote for all the waivers.
Do I have a motion?
Are we motioning to approve the waivers?
Motion approved.
We're not doing that.
Well, um...
We don't have to go to each one, right?
We don't have to go to each one, we can, um, TEC, maybe 4.7, 4.7.1 leave out and discuss. And, uh, trying to find the one with the turnaround radius, which one is that? 4.3, all the sack requirements and... That's the one in TEC. Right? So...
Should we approve the waivers that TEC has signed off on and the two that are still debatable? Take that up into further conversation?
Yes.
I'd still like to say though, if you can do tests and if it's not a bad run for underground, you agree? If you run into trouble in ledge, then...
If we can, that's fine.
Yeah, but if it's all, if it's all just moving earth, then it's...
If you'll luck out, if you don't. At least it's in there, is that, can we do that Rebecca?
We could put a condition that they would in fact, um, if we could do something maybe prior to like a building permit...
They're doing test pits for the driveway and they're, they're going to bring a machine in.
Prior to site work or prior to a building permit?
I think the most efficient way to do it is while the driveway's going in.
Going in.
Doing the testing, you know, but, you know, now when you're pushing dirt around, you're seeing where the, the, uh...
Yep.
What you have, things are being pushed around. And if, at that point, what I'm opposing is not that the electric following the edge of driveway, because that is certainly going to be runway, but to, to swing right over to the property line, it would have to be almost right against the stone wall. Do you remember the site?
Yes.
Yeah, stone wall's on the right, right?
Uh, looking in from...
The street, it's on the right.
It's on the right.
It's on the right.
Yep.
So that's the only spot that's not led, everything else is pretty...
Right.
So that's the only... If that's the case, we could do prior to an issuance of a building permit, because they're not going to need a building permit in order to construct the roadway just as in any typical subdivision. So they would be able to do that type of work prior to the building permit being issued for the house, so we could get some type of reassurance that they are in fact looking into putting utilities underground and showing that based upon what they find, they are either able to or unable to prior to us signing off on a building permit, if the board would be amenable to a condition of that nature.
Okay, would the board, uh, uh, would you want to witness test holes or how would you go about that?
I guess, I don't know if there's any type of, um...
Is this going to be monitored?
So, yeah, that's the only thing I could think of is that during the monitoring, there would be some type of...
It's just going to be monitored up to the hammerhead.
Right.
And after that itself, personal driveway, so...
So I think that we could tackle that.
Although it's falling within that, within that, um, section of the road.
Right.
Well, it's, it's either you're going to be doing a SWIP and seeking a waiver from the land disturbance permit or you're going to be doing a land disturbance permit, which would require the monitoring, which would take into consideration the erosion control, the rainfall events and all that. So they'll be monitoring either way. So I guess we could tag it into that.
Yeah, so, uh, whose jurisdiction would that fall in?
The planning board's jurisdiction.
So would the planning board want to witness some, uh...
Well, no, they...
Do some exploratory work, come back to the planning board, uh, show you my findings or you can come out to the field and witness the findings and then we can make a decision.
So whoever you choose to do your third-party engineering would be out on site and they would tell the board that it would... So you're going to have to pay an engineer to monitor regardless, so we can work with whatever engineering firm that is chosen to minimize the cost by making sure that when they have to go out there, it's also on the day that you're doing something that would require them to be there. So they don't charge for multiple visits, it's just that one visit. So we can definitely work with the, the engineering firm and monies.
It's kind of standard when you do the wetland crossings and...
Or if we did test pit, we did the measurement in pitches and such and flag and...
Yep, but, you know...
Trees in the background so we can, uh, document the field, the way that the location was.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
So if T, if you were to put a dollar figure on monitoring engineering-wise, how long? Not to...
I'd be talking out of school right now, I have no idea. I'd be talking out of school, so I haven't given it...
So if you figured a month's worth of monitoring, just because of weather and...
Hard to put a number on it without a schedule.
Right.
So, I don't think you're gonna get that, what figure you're looking for.
No, you can't, you can't, you can't put a number. Right, no.
So then, all right, so the board has voted to approve the waivers, so I have a motion for the waivers as recommended by T E C, one amendment to the condition, the waiver for underground utilities based upon some exploratory activity, and then there's also the turnaround, and then I need affirmative motion as to how the board would like to vote.
Yeah, we, so I agree that we, we agree on the waiver of T E C's recommendations, and that we will explore more for the two issues that you speak about. On favor, second?
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll go ahead.
I do have the decision drafted, if you wanna take a look at what I have for two forty-five.
If it doesn't work, you go over and work, yeah.
Just added expense, but.
Yeah.
Not a day.
Don't know when he puts.
He has a decision.
So as that decision and as we just discussed, there'll be one particular.
You'll know what you hit.
There'll be one particular change.
Exploratory digging with that, or they just put me underground?
No, 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 exploratory digging, you'll know pretty fast.
Yeah, you're gonna know, within a couple of days.
Thousand feet underground.
Exactly.
No, no, I know, it's.
So on, condition ten will be changed, obviously, from the conversation from hidden driveway, it will be changed to a curb sign. Then also, prior to endorsement, that, I mean, prior to a building permit, we'll have that additional condition about the exploratory digging. And then the only other outstanding condition on this as a draft is the performance guarantee bond. I had spoken briefly to Pete about this, but I don't believe that he had said anything at that point in time, so whether or not we wanna try and take a stab at that based upon what we've recently done for other similar developments, or whether or not Pete can weigh in a little bit about what he might estimate.
So we do for the whole, for that bond? Hmm, Benedict Street?
It's sort of kind of a bond.
I, I know the, the latest one had more of a stormwater infrastructure component, where this one does not have nearly as much stormwater infrastructure. That one was set at almost two hundred with a contingency of twenty percent, so I would think that that would drop down, but I, I haven't got a technical answer from Pete as of yet.
Still on site.
Well, would, would you recommend for a bond, Pete?
Yeah, and to remain private, right, so it's always gonna be private, president.
Yep.
It's never gonna be the town that's gonna.
No.
Then we've got to bring out the road, road specification.
It's the, it's the stormwater basin at the bottom of the driveway, we don't wanna make sure that gets built. The road control, maybe some water.
Yeah, just at the bottom of the driveway, I like.
Exactly.
Huh?
It's two thousand dollars, and I wanna start putting the retention bonds in, in the city for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know what, yeah.
Huh?
Fifty. Whatever. Gotta figure what mine was.
Yeah, okay.
And I had a detention bond.
Right.
Four fifty.
Put a bond at fifty thousand? Fifty thousand to you? Yeah, okay.
That's, that's gonna be cash bond?
It does not, it could be a letter of credit, something of that nature.
No, it does not.
No.
I think I did a forty, it was like a grand, I think, for you.
Yep. That's plus the storm, stem, storm runners, everything, so.
Just get it stabilized.
Yeah.
Once it's stabilized, the detention bond's built, and it's grown grass.
We, we'll release it.
Well, it's state under twenty. Rift rap for grass, but I prefer grass. The, the only area that's.
The only other suggestion based upon the butter's comment that I would suggest that we add to the decision is that the plan referenced is the plan number from the, the latest plan, which I believe is the ninth of November, so we should, I, I can put in that they will update the plan to reflect the waivers accordingly. And I would recommend that the board take that as one of the conditions that we can put in prior to endorsement of the plan.
Sounds good.
Close out the meeting. Um, any other comments?
No.
So.
So, what would, as far as addressing fire apparatus, turning requirements, we just strictly achieve and see what you want some of the.
So that's what I have, and the actual decision itself is one of the conditions, is that the applicant shall.
To work with the.
The fire department reviewed the submitted plans and noted that the applicant shall provide documentation by way of an emergency access turning analysis demonstrating that a large fire apparatus can safely use the access road and turn around, the department will, shall sign off prior to endorsement of plan. So you'll need to work that out with the fire department prior to the planning board making any endorsement of the actual plan itself.
So before we get to get approved of the style.
So you'll get, you can get an, if the board is amenable, they can approve your decision, and you'll have an approval, then you have a twenty-day appeal period, after that twenty-day appeal period, there's certain conditions that you must meet in order for you to begin work, based upon that, that would be the turn in analysis, so there is plenty of time, I would believe, for you to be able to work with them and figure something out prior to, to needing that finalized.
Do you have a new chief?
Yes, we do, I just met him today, he's very nice. I think Rhode Island.
Yeah, Rhode Island, he's moving up this way, yeah. So, does the board, uh. You wanna close here, or you wanna put on this? Um. Close the hearing?
Yes.
On.
Yeah, motion to close the hearing.
Forty-five Center Street?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, and then make a motion to approve the interim decisions?
Motion to approve.
Has amended.
Has amended.
Has amended.
On two forty-five Center Street?
Yep.
On favor?
Aye.
Second.
Yep, second, sorry.
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on. Okay, so.
Track to seven thirty-three.
Yeah, you wanna go back to it?
So.
You guys ready now? Finally here? Huh? Yeah. What? Oh, you can't go just play tennis and come back here, you know, so, no problem.
So does Bob wanna take the lead on the.
Yes, I have the receipt from this Bob, so do you wanna take over the hearing?
What do I have to do?
What do I have?
You don't have to do anything, so we're just gonna do, I believe, do you have both?
We're just doing Benjamin's side, so that's probably through tonight.
So this one is just gonna be for thirty-eight Benjamin Street, which we just approved. They have their executed Form F, which is the covenant on the lot prior to any construction and placement of bond. Then they also have their Form H, which is the conveyance of any utilities and the right of way or any of that. They also have their liability insurance, they have it set for, the decision states five million, but the applicant is requesting two million. It is only a single-family dwelling, so I don't think that's unreasonable if the board is amenable.
No.
And they've also provided a estimated construction sequence, schedule of when they estimate to begin work and throughout the season. That'll be a little bit more, once we get into the details of it, you'll see a little bit more from the monitoring and whatnot, but they have included all of that, and they had the set of mylar.
Okay.
So I just need signature, the board is amenable to doing that.
Make a motion to sign the mylar. Do I have a motion to sign the mylar?
Motion to sign the mylar.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You cannot, you can, they just need three signatures.
Yeah.
So you'll wanna sign up here.
They were like sixty, seventy dollars. It's like an old D nine, seventy D nine.
Um, two. Yeah, so you get a sign up.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Is it not working?
No, it's a little bit dried out.
Maybe a little smog. Exactly. Right, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, you know, save your bees, going around with an excavator and.
Yeah, we'll do. Well, I gotta sign too.
How many are there?
Quite a bit.
Bob, don't forget to date it too, please.
Yeah. For a house? Over here.
Yep, yep.
Done yet?
Nope, two more.
Oh, I'm gonna go down there and stuff.
Yep.
Huh? Yeah, I thought.
Yep, well, I suppose we'll just steal it.
Can you date it for me, or he won't forget, he'll forget that.
Down there, is that what it is?
Hold on. The third.
Third.
Can I get your signature? So this is for S U A, so you all need to sign it, so.
Oh, I don't, I don't need to sign it? Yeah, I do, I do, huh?
Yeah, and, and, and we're fine.
Yeah.
Sign the mortgage.
Lower. That's number one. Yeah.
Look at Perry K G.
It's not done yet. Aye.
After me. Oh, wait, did we sign this one?
Yeah, they signed it. They signed it. Oh, there's two. Oh, it's not right there. Second one down. One left.
And then seven thirty-three Salem will be at the next meeting. I'm sorry. Uh, so for that particular one, because it opened back in March, we will need Lisa, Bob Arakalian, and Walter. So those three members, I didn't remember at that point, and neither was Brad, and Bob has to recuse himself. I will, and at the same time, if the board is amenable to this, I would be able, if they would let me take and confirm that the material is there, and then I can send out an email to the board members and see whether or not they could stop by and sign the mylar, so that if it's sooner rather than later, we can do that.
Yep.
If the board is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's acceptable. That was visited, was it? Yeah. That was there. Talking about the wall down the street.
We were told that they're not gonna plow that anymore, even though they've been plowing it for three years, and I'm not, I'm not sure why. We were told way back, I mean, like two thousand and nineteen, that they were gonna plow it, they were maintaining it, bringing it and everything, because we built a road to the, you know, the specs for the town, it was always gonna be a public work, it was always gonna be a town road, and we just obviously didn't know, but we needed to, to get accepted, it didn't even realize we had to do that. We thought that when we came in and they released the bond, and they approved the whole Asbou plan and everything, that it was all set, and I found out now from Rebecca, that there was another step that had to be done. So we're now doing that stuff, and in the meantime, like the fourth winter, that the property's been there, and now we're being told that they're not gonna plow this winter.
What do they have to do?
So technically, uh, street acceptance is governed under mass general law, and cities and towns have certain procedures that they need to go through in order to accept a roadway. and cities and towns have certain procedures that they need to go through in order to accept a roadway as a public way and provide services to that way. Um, particularly in towns, it has to be done at a town meeting. So while I understand the frustration of the Hulu homes in terms of what happened, and it is unfortunate, um, my position has been that that is the standard, that is the legal way that it should be done, and that they need to abide by those requirements prior to receiving those services.
Correct.
So I have put up the procedures for street acceptance on the website. I've shared them with the, uh, Hulu, Hulu's, as well as any other streets that have not been accepted formally at town meeting and in the procedure that is required under, uh, Mass General law. So they need to provide a deed to the roadway, they need to provide, um, the easement and maintenance documentation for any of the infrastructure. So any of the detention ponds or anything of that nature that the town is going to be responsible for, it has an operations and maintenance, just to give us an idea of what we're supposed to be taking over. It also gives us rights to access them, 'cause a lot of times they are on private property. Um, it involves making sure that we have everything kinda signed off, that the roadway is, was built in accordance to what the plans had set forth. I know that the planning board at one point in time did review the roadway layout plan in this particular case, and approved it and released their bond. However, typically, you do not release the bond in its entirety until the roadway has been accept, accepted, especially in a roadway that was intended to be made public. Um, so they have, in fact, it looks like, supplied that documentation. I would review this with town council in terms of the deed and any of the easement information. I would also work with the, uh, highway superintendent to make sure that he is satisfied with the roadway in terms of maintaining it. And then the warrant article would be placed on, um, the article would be placed on the warrant back in the March timeframe, and it would be voted on at spring town meeting in May. Uh, but again, the, uh, the Hulu's are frustrated because now it's the winter months, and now they must supply, uh, plowing services, whereas originally they were not.
Right.
And, you know, again, back when we went through this, and I know we, we weren't here. Um, they, they renewed, they had their engineer review the plan, the roadway plan was all, was given to the board, and everything was done, actually, we had things that had to be changed according to the engineer, which we did. Everything got approved, everything was done, we were told all set, you know, the vomit, where, uh, uh, highway department that thing had already said that they were going to be maintaining all the drainage and taking care of all of that, the reasons for that, and they were going to plow, which they have for three years. So, I'm just saying, I know things were different then, and I understand that there's new rules that we're learning. We're kind of learning together and trying to get things done the proper way now, which I understand. I just feel like it's kind of, I don't know, uh, uh, this doesn't seem right to, to not continue to plow this street that you have been doing for three years.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent, but in some ways, if you wanna look at it this way, they should not have done it their first three years. You know what I'm saying? It just sounds like to me that, I, I, no, no, I, I'm not arguing the point with you. But all I'm saying to you is, based on the new circumstances, it seems like there's a catch twenty-two until, correct me if I'm wrong, until these get submitted and approved.
So you also need to get the laying out of the roadway approved by the board of selectmen.
Right.
But they're asking for services to, plowing services to continue.
I agree.
Until they do that.
Who has that authority to have that happen?
I don't believe that, my recommendation is that that does not happen, it does not set a standard. It makes it so that we cannot hold anyone accountable for the roadways, and it allows, it, it sets a horrible precedent. It may not have been done the right way, and I'm terribly sorry that it was not, but I do not believe that we should make exceptions. 'Cause if we start making exceptions, what's different from them than the rest of them? So how do we hold Atwood accountable? How do we hold all the other ones accountable? We can't hold one person accountable and the other one, because they made a mistake, not accountable. It's not fair.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think a lot of things are different than they. There was never a, um, home, homeowners association together, or requested from the planning board for us to do, which normally we would do right before it became public, because the town said they were gonna do it. And honestly, if we had known back in two thousand and whatever it was, sixteen, seventeen, that this procedure had to get done right away, or we were gonna be responsible for taking care, but we, we would have done it, we just didn't know.
Yeah.
You know?
We didn't walk them through the process properly.
'Cause we didn't go through the whole subdivision process, it was already approved, the darks had done it. So we were definitely under.
Who was I, it was me, Jim, and O'Henley? Is it?
I came in halfway.
Yeah, we didn't walk them through the process properly. After the project was complete.
Yeah, check with town council and stuff.
I think we should just, um, continue doing what we told them we were due, and stop it there now. And then from now on, Estes Way, and, uh, Senate Street, whatever, um.
So the highway superintendent is the one who will make the ultimate decision, but if the planning board would like to make a vote to authorize him to do so, you're more than willing to do.
Have, you mean have him make a decision?
Well, he, he ultimately has the authority over where they send the plows, and then the board of selectmen as well. Um, however, I mean, the, if the board would, is amenable to making a motion of such to.
How many years has it been? Three, three years?
Yeah.
That the town would be, or you, this would be the fourth year, you'd have to be plowing, so. I, I make a motion that we continue plowing.
You can make a motion, you have to recuse yourself.
Hmm?
You have to recuse yourself.
The hell with it. I'll make a motion anyway.
I'd advise against it.
Hmm?
I'd advise against it. But you're welcome to do so.
What is, what is she saying? Because we don't have.
No, she advised me and him.
It's not on the agenda.
No, he's gotta, Bob's gotta recuse himself.
I can't.
Bob has to recuse himself.
It's not on the agenda, but at, more importantly, I, I would recommend that the board not take this position.
Would not, what?
Take this position of making an exception.
Um, I disagree.
So then will you make the motion to request that the highway superintendent look into this?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I don't know. So if they say no, you have, you're gonna have to plow it.
What's the turnaround rate from that being completed, so that the? So, so directly speaking, this would be the last winter you would have to pay. And then we wouldn't have to put this issue to rest, and we don't have to worry about it in the future. So, I mean, that's the worst-case scenario. Could we talk to the, um, the highway commission prior?
It's gonna make a decision anyways.
Yeah.
That's what we had said.
That was the motion. The motion is for highway superintendent to make a decision as to, uh, town services.
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd like to see the highway commission, um, input on this, definitely.
Yep, I will make the matter known to him and ask for him to supply correspondence to both yourself and the applicant to see whether or not they would be amenable to providing those services.
Plowing it for three years.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that.
But like Jim's, I'll tell you after. I'll put notes and.
Second, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, let's see what the commission has to say.
That's good, we got it. I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay, you're back on.
I'm back on. All right.
Yep.
Three oh one Main Street, uh, make a motion to continue the public hearing.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, my name is William Bergeron, I'm with the firm of Hayes Engineering. Been a long time since I've been before you guys, but hopefully, I'm here to provide a little clarification of what we wanna have happen here at three oh one Main Street. As you know, it's been kicking around for a couple of years now, figuring out how to reuse the existing site since the bridge reconstruction was completed. And I provided you a memo, that I provided to Rebecca on Monday, and basically, it's to outline several different points. And the main point that I think that it does cover is the fact that the existing driveway configuration and the existing site layout that was left by the state after the land takings for, makes the site difficult to use, any kind of a retail, uh, facility there. Fortunately, the zoning bylaws for the town of, of Groveland have been in a provision under section nine point two, a shared driving provision and a shared parking provision. Um, and that's for areas that do have public parking within five hundred feet of the site. And we do think that the area on Elm Park and on School Street provides significant amount of public parking that would be usable to this site. A restaurant use is what is proposed. I have given you the traffic generations for a restaurant. And it's not just going to be a fast food restaurant, or a drive-through restaurant, or a McDonald's, or any fast food. This is a sit-down quality restaurant. Typical times are a minimum of an hour and a half for each of, of the meals. And basically, this is a reservation-type situation. So with the fact that it's a reservation kind of, kind of a situation, when people call, they can be instructed to say that there's no onsite parking, and that the parking that is usable for this is in the public parking, that's either on Elm Street, School Street, or any other public areas for parking within the area. Um, I provided you an aerial photo of the, uh, location here. And it has the, you know, with the reconstruction and the new lighting and the crosswalks and the sidewalks that were installed as part of that whole major upgrade, there are, you know, there is direct access from the Elm Park public parking area directly to basically the front door of what would be the new restaurant. Other things that we need to consider is, um, under your provisions, if we are gonna have shared parking, that we have to demonstrate that the shared parking wouldn't be a burden, and it would have capacity if a new use went into it. So during the long weekend of, in October, I monitored the traffic, um, parking patents over on the Elm Park and School Street on, on the Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, and Monday, the actual holiday, uh, to determine how much parking was available. And the minimum parking was sixteen parking spaces that were open. The major portion of the time, there was twenty to twenty-four parking spaces open. Now, the requirement of the restaurant is that it was going to be, I believe, under the zoning bylaw, it says that we would have to have twenty-three parking spaces. What we would suggest, and what I've suggested in the letter, is that the actual employee parking actually be the ones that are onsite, so that all patrons to this, to the restaurant would actually be in the public parking vein. So that would eliminate one of the major stumbling blocks of the site, which is the traffic into and out of the site. By controlling the traffic on the public parking portion of the site, and by directing them through the reservation process, I think we can avoid a lot of the onsite traffic that would be coming in and out of the site. And we, we still would maintain three parking spaces open. One would be a handicap space, and there would be two additional, you know, patron places there. But other than, other than that, if people called and they either were elderly or had a handicap condition, then we would designate those spaces for them, for their use, but direct all other ones to use the public parking adjacent to the site. So I think out of the provisions of nine point two point one, with the parking analysis that I did and the survey that I did, that there is sufficient additional existing public parking that would support this type of a restaurant use. Another thing is that, you know, there's been several different uses that have been coming up for this potential, particular site. And I think a quality sit-down restaurant would be a, an asset to the actual downtown area, you know, the square area that's there. There are no real quality restaurants within the area. Um, the peak hour for the restaurant is actually off-peak to most other things that are in the area. As you know, this does have a shared use with the pot, the post office. Post office closes at five o'clock. The bulk of the, the dining traffic would be after the five o'clock hour, unless you're an old guy like me and you're gonna go for the early bird specials. But basically, all of the other, um, all the other uses in the area would be either closed type of a, of a use in that, in that condition. Um, the other thing is that, obviously, this is the first building that you see on the left-hand side as you enter into Groveland. Basically, it's a gateway to the city. And I think that putting a restaurant, upgrading the facade, providing some architectural interest to the building, doing some upgraded landscaping for that area would, would be an enhancement to the whole area. And I think that this would be a, a use that would be compatible with the, um, what, what could work on this area. Um, and I think it would be an asset to the community. We've also been talking back and forth, and as I note in the, um, in my memo, on October twenty-third, we sent the, all the information into Mass Highway Department, and I, as, as late as last Wednesday, I did get someone to respond to me to say that they were still looking at it. Um, I did provide them with this updated memo that you got, um, yesterday as well. And my intent is to keep, uh, working with them to see if I can get them to make a decision. My initial discussions with, um, Mass Highway Department was that we did not have to have a curb cut permit. I know there's been some conversations back and forth since that time, but I believe the fact that the proposal, as it is now, is minimal traffic in and out of the site. I don't think it'd be any worse, it'd probably be significantly better, um, during the off-peak hours than what the post office would have on a Saturday morning when there's traffic going in and out of that. And I understand that, you know, the, some of the, the abut, the abutters access is basically predominantly for the use of the post office. This wouldn't require any additional use of that site. We are trying to take that whole aspect away from this and make this independent of the use of the adjacent driveways, so that the post office, if they continue to use it the way they've been using it, that's fine. But the restaurant would be not dependent on having to use that, uh, facility at all. So we think that, you know, the additional nine spaces onsite, with the employee parking taking the bulk of those spaces, except for the handicaps, like I said, I think indicate that this is something that will work on the site, and finally, we'll, we'll put this to bed. So we're looking forward to seeing what your, what your opinion is of this, and looking for your feedback.
Uh, so we have not had a chance to put together that yet, um, but you just received the additional information yesterday.
Aye.
Uh, but, uh, hearing this presentation tonight, and with that new information, we'll take a close look at that, see how it fits with the bylaw. I guess the initial high-level review is, is the same problems that have always existed at the site, continue to be there with the lack of parking and, uh, the driveway function, so. But we'll, we'll take a look at the, at the new information.
Yeah, I, I think the, the whole purpose of this is understanding the complications that the, that the curb cut that was left to service this site by the state was not an ideal situation whatsoever. And having any facility that's gonna generate a lot of traffic in and out of that site's something that's not gonna work. So based on the fact that, of your own bylaw, and the fact that it is. of your own bylaw, and the fact that it is basically in a downtown setting, restaurants typically don't have, you know, if you go downtown Haverhill, every restaurant there has no public parking. I mean, all has public parking. There's no private parking for any of it. So the public parking aspect of this, and the fact that it's off-peak hours also makes, makes a huge difference, because it is using spaces that would not otherwise be used. So we think this is the best opportunity we have to have this site and to improve the, our gateway building. The site plan has not changed since-
Total reservation only. You can't just walk in and be seated.
Reservation only. This is, it's, you know, his, his daughter is a chef, and it's, it's an exciting experience. It's not, it's not going to, you know-
You only got nine, nine spaces in there now. What are you planning on doing with the snow like we had this past two days? You're not going to put it over the river because you can't. You're going to have to haul it out.
Right. If, if the snow became an issue, then they'd have to be hauled out. And that happens a lot of places.
It's going to become an issue there. I know it's going to become an issue. And you're not, you are creating, you're not creating more traffic pattern, but you are creating more walking issues.
Absolutely.
Which, you know, I discussed with the chief of police too, which he was concerned about crossing the street all the time, especially with that light there and everything, especially where the crosswalk is, is up north towards the bridge, then down towards the exit of the property.
No, it's actually exactly right where the door, the front door to the restaurant would be. I showed you a picture of it.
That crosswalk goes straight into our sidewalk, which is the front door. And I believe it should, well, the aerial co-geometry, although it's not quite as, as good, that's going to be where our sidewalk is.
Where do you, where do you get the parking on Main Street? You said there was going to be public parking on Main Street?
No. On Elm Park and on School, School Street.
You said Main Street also.
No public parking on Main.
So School Street, you're talking about the public?
There's public parking on the left-hand side.
Are there lights parked?
Yeah.
So there's buses there now that-
No, no. As soon as you make the, the right-hand turn onto School Street from the bridge, there's public parking on the left-hand side along the curb line.
You mean Stark and Cronk?
That's Stark and Cronk. That's not public parking.
That's Main Street.
That's Main Street. That's not School Street.
So what are you referring to as a group of municipal lights department law?
That's what I thought.
That there are many parking spaces?
That's School Street, isn't it? And that's public parking along School Street.
Oh, there's three public parking spots right in front of Stark and Cronk. The other one, yeah, the other ones are not, yes.
Set School Street on this map. Yes.
That's what I'm, that's, you know.
Those, there's three spaces there.
We've gone over this all.
Three spaces over there, and the bulk of the spaces are in Elm Park. There's 12 that are, that are nose-in, and then further up, there's all kinds of parking along Elm, Elm Park, all the way back.
Parking.
Car parking.
Yeah, I don't think there's parking alongside the Elm Park.
Cars always park there.
I agree. That Groveland needs a restaurant. I like a good meal like anybody else. Trust me, I do. And I agree that we could use one, and I think it would be a great thing. I like your concept about the dining spots designated for employees. Therefore, it takes away the element of safety from people coming in and out at the same time. I like that. I prefer to see all three spots for handicap. But again, like my good colleague says about the foot traffic, and the lighting, and that kind of safety things, you know what I'm saying? That may be a concern for the most part, but other than that, I think it's a good alternative, you know? Anybody in the audience?
With smart, with smart streets, you know, they want to encourage bikes, and they want to encourage walking, so.
There is a crosswalk.
This is a downtown area. There's a, there's an excellent system.
Some of the safety issues.
So what happens if you get four handicap people? Do people have to move out? Do the employees have to move out to let people in?
You know, the suggestion of making them all handicap parking spaces would not be something that we would be not-
What happens, you know, safe passage-wise, you know what I mean, with cars entering and that's always been, I, listen, I like the idea of a restaurant, don't get me wrong.
Well, that's one of the advantages of having a reservation system, because people coming in aren't going to try to get into the site unless it's a handicap person who wants to park on the site. Other people are going to go directly over, you know, with instructions over the phone, how to get to the public parking aspect of it.
Excuse me?
And then once people, once people, these, this is like a return type of a situation. So once people go there once, they're going to understand how the parking situation works.
So the reservation, so I come home from work at 6:00, and I say to the wife, "What do you want to do? Want to go out for dinner?" "Yeah, let's go to the new restaurant down the street." I call up and I say, "Yeah, I'd like to have a dinner for two." And you'd say to me either one of two ways. Either, next table's not going to be available till 7:30, and then that may change my decision on what I'm going to do, or you can say, "You know what? So we can make accommodations for you tonight."
That's basically what it is, because we don't want to have, you know, twice as many people waiting to sit down at a restaurant. It's not that kind of a restaurant. It's a restaurant that they need to prepare the food. It takes a while to prepare the food. So if the reservations are open, you know, so that they can accommodate them, so you have the right traffic flow in and out of the restaurant, then you're controlling how the traffic's going in and out of the restaurant. So, I mean, that's, that's the way they envision it working, and that's, I think, makes it work.
Are we still relying on that curb cut?
The modification would be to, it actually, the handicap ramp that they put in for the post office actually intrudes into it a little bit. So the modification that's on the plan was to kick that over to make it so it's wider. But that just, that doesn't affect the actual curb cut. It's just to make the driveway better onsite.
Still think we have to wait for TEC to make their comments.
Absolutely. I understand that. I mean, Rebecca said we had to get something in.
Is there going to be a bar there too? So if a person can just walk off the street and sit down and have a drink and leave, or?
It's not that, it's not that kind of a bar. You know, the bar's to service tables. I'm sure there'll be a few seats.
So the license would just provide alcohol to the patrons as they're there for the hour, hour, whatever it is.
No, I'm not, I'm not the restaurant guy, but it's, it's not meant to be a bar that you go sit at.
Right.
It's, it's a bar that serves because of the restaurant.
How do you hold them to just the reservation only? You got nobody, nobody sitting in there, and all of a sudden, people walk in, you're going to seat them. You're going to have the parking off-street, you know what I mean? So it's not just a reservation-only restaurant.
Yeah, that's, we can, you know-
You have nobody here, but you'll have to call for us before you come in. You know what I mean?
Any comments from public?
The hours of the establishment?
I believe it's three, closed Mondays, and it's, it's 3:00, 2:00, 3:00 to 10:00. And then-
Noon to 10:00 on Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah. So the post office closes at noon on Saturdays, not open on Sundays, so.
Friday night, what do you say, 3:00?
3:00, 3:00 PM to 10:00.
On a Friday?
Yeah.
That's where everybody's getting out of work, picking up their mail.
Oh, Friday's noontime.
Huh?
Friday's noontime.
No, Friday is 3:00 PM, 3:00-
Friday at noontime.
I thought you said Friday is noontime, yeah.
He did.
Oh.
I can't hear.
But it's only, it's only, you know, employees, so they'll be there, so they'll be knowing where to come in. So there's still going to be enough places for parking. I don't, I don't, I don't understand that one.
No, the off-peak hours, if the people are going to the restaurant, the, where the actual post office is, they're going to be parking across the street. So it doesn't matter.
You just said Friday at noontime.
It doesn't matter if the post office is open. If the post office is open, just like it is right now.
Yeah.
What difference does it make if the, if the patrons of the restaurant are going to be across the street in the public parking?
They see an open parking lot, spot in the post office, they're going to grab that one first and go walk across the restaurant.
They're, they're not going to, the six employees for the, for the restaurant are going to have those spaces, and then there's going to be the handicap places.
So what are you going to do with the post office parking?
Post office, there's, there's nine spaces that are there. When the post office is, there's nine total spaces on the site. When the post office is in operation-
I don't know. I guess I'm-
Can I jump in?
Huh?
Is the public hearing open?
Yeah, okay, yeah. I asked, yep.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to go to the mic or not.
Yes, please, yeah.
Why don't you just state your name and, and your position?
Okay, I'll, I'll jump in, please. Accommodating. Brian Cornell, representing Groveland Square LLC, which is the abutter 293, 291 Main Street. I just want to be clear, we're still looking for a special permit for a reduction in parking. That's what's being presented and decided here, right? So I understand the bylaw 9.2, but back to 9.4, which is the special permit language, it's, you know, as long as this is not inconsistent with public health and safety, and that the reduction promotes a public benefit. I think obviously everyone would agree, a restaurant in Elm Square would be great. That'd be a thumbs up. The safety concerns, everything else about that curb cut, about whether or not it's, you know, if you're open at noon on a Friday, and you've got six employees that are parked in those spaces where the post office people are going to park, there's, you know, we went from, I believe, what was seven or eight required for the post office. Now we've got a total of nine for both uses, and we're reconstituting the service station into a restaurant that requires, I think, whatever, 23, 28. I think the total number was like 30-plus spots. One of the concerns I have, obviously, is by and large, people use our driveway, right? And, and again, I'll say it again, we, we don't go out there to figure out which one of our customers in Groveland, it's a small town, are there, and which ones aren't our customers. So we, we're thinking off by the time if, if something does get proposed. I'm talking Jersey barriers across the back of our property, that entire side will be gone. So that will have to function on its own merits from an ingress egress for the employees, for postal, employees for postal customers. So just FYI. That should probably be considered as part of, when you get to a vote. But I just look at it today, you know, it's December 1st, you know, that's pretty early in the snow season, December 3rd, whatever it is, but, you know, we, we've had a pretty big storm. And I look around there and try to scratch my head to find out how you're going to have a successful restaurant with people parking all over that, that center. None of it's really labeled as public, or not public, or what have you. I'm not sure, I mean, I know the, there's a couple spots in front of Stark and Cronk, and, you know, maybe you can park up on Elm Square. I've never seen a lot of that, other than just kind of the residents that may have parked and run in and out. I do know there's a few spots right there, but by and large, a lot of the people that go into the post office park in our driveway. We are labeling that out. I've gone on record and told you guys, we're, we're actually going to kind of shut some of that stuff down. But from, from a standpoint of how this will operate, I, I asked to have, whether or not it's nine spots, or whether it's 22 spots, or whether it was 30 spots that were going into that area, obviously it can only accommodate nine safely, for them to actually do an accurate traffic study for just the post office. Forget about the restaurant. The restaurant's not there. It's, it's a total hypothetical at this point. But today, you know, the, and to say that there's a traffic study on a holiday weekend in October, when people are still going away, sneaking away for that last weekend, we closed next door at 2:00 PM, because I let people go early on a holiday weekend, and there's really nothing down there to be at, people go away. So of course, it's going to be a bit of a ghost town on a holiday weekend. What's it going to be during the week, during the weeknights, everything else? What is the local community going to see for traffic in and around that area? You know, if there was no way to assure that, and the only way to assure that I'm not liable for patrons and people all throughout our driveway and our property is to just simply close it. I mean, that's what I'm going to have to do, period. I mean, I can't, we, we can say that, you know, hey, they're not going to use it. They're, they're going to go try to park wherever they can. So I'll leave it to the restaurateurs to figure out how a reservation-only system is going to curb people. I mean, obviously, if it catches on, and I hope that it would be a success, you know, people are going to find out how to get there. But I wouldn't equate the, the Haverhill downtown, which is a major city, and people parking around there, and there is public parking on and about there that's labeled, that's metered, that's everything else, and people going to restaurants and pubs down there, to Elm Square. It's a small town. It's just a little spot, you know. So I, I've kind of talked about this a number of times, as to kind of where we stand. We're, we're not really in favor of a reduction in parking or to open. I'd love for something else to be in there, but it's not. I understand it's the gateway. It is not a great thing to look at as we come over the bridge. It probably should have been torn down when the bridge went in, but it is what it is. So I just wanted to go on record with that. Thank you.
You have a public caller?
Mike Maroney, live in Haverhill. Just a quick response. As far as snow removal, every business has to deal with it. I don't care what, what business you're in, whether it's Market Basket, they, you have to deal with it. You have to deal with the snow. If it's too much, you get a haul the way. We always, we all know the rules. You can't use the river. So as far as parking, I mean, I don't see any difference in this restaurant having 68 seats and the Groveland Diner having 55 seats, and it worked very well downtown with zero changes than it is right now. It was a very, very successful restaurant for years, and my family used to go there all the time. And so they have 55 seats in that restaurant, and I've stood in line in the little hallway, waiting for another table for the family, and we, I never, not once, could not find a parking spot somewhere in the square. So obviously, it works. It works when they have zero parking for their employees, zero parking for their patrons. So I don't see where there's a difference between the Groveland Diner and this restaurant. So I just wanted to make a comparison to what it, it does work downtown in Groveland. It worked. The Groveland Diner proved it worked. So, thank you.
Good point. Something to take into consideration.
And as far as blocking off, agree with him. He should block it off so that, because I wouldn't want to have to police his parking lot for, for my patrons. So, you know, we're not anticipating, we don't want to use it. We've always said we're never going to use it, and I think that he really would have to block it off, so the, my patrons would not have to, would use it. So, and not as he want to be out there at night trying to say, hey, use my parking lot. So, thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to get TEC's opinion on, on the letter.
I'd like to make a motion to get TEC's opinion on the letter and his comments in the next meeting.
Next meeting is scheduled for January 7th, and the applicant will need to sign a continuance. We are up against a statutory deadline from when he opened the public hearing.
Okay. I'll second it.
Is the applicant willing to sign a continue?
Yeah, the applicant willing to sign the continuance? I think it's January 7th.
What do you want me to do?
Just put January 7th right there, and then-
Sign it.
Sign it, yes.
Okay.
Did you want it January 3rd or the 7th?
Oh, yes, the January 3rd.
Okay. See, I sometimes remember. Two thousand and forty. Thanks a lot. Okay, thank you.
So, motion on table to, anybody second it?
We all second it.
I'll second it. I'm sorry. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then, the last item that I have on the agenda is a carryover from the former agenda regarding Core School Street. So we have a comprehensive permit that's being reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. I provided you with preliminary information prior to the hearing on the 19th, and then I supplemented that material with updated information. The board had requested that I leave it on the agenda for this meeting to see if there was any additional comments.
I haven't even had a chance to read it over, Rebecca, so.
So then, should we have, I'll resend the email with the link, and then you guys can have until the end of the month, until the first of the year to respond to my email, and then I can take those and put them into writing for the zoning board of appeals meeting, which will be in January.
Correct.
So I will take it off the agenda, and I will send out an email, and we'll see what any comments I have, that you all have. Does that work?
That works.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, motion to adjourn, seven, I mean, I'm sorry, eight thirty-five.
I second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.